I will now call the October 19th, 2009 Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. We're going to ask that you stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome all of you in attendance tonight, as well as those that might be watching on cable channel seven. The next item is the consent. Councilman Solon asked that I pull item C, or there are other items to be pulled from the consent agenda. Seeing none, I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda, except item C.
Second.
Is there a second? Let's have a roll call.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, item C, Councilman Solon, it is approving the bylaws of the Midwest Public Risk.
Yes, Your Honor, on July 20th of this year, the city council approved to continue our contract with NPR despite concerns about the lack of liability coverage. The city was told at that time that our staff would begin a review of different coverage options that would be available to us. That review was to seek advice from an unbiased independent insurance professionals to compare dollar to dollar, real insurance versus self-insurance, and to get advice on the risks and liabilities with NPR. We haven't done such a review in 24 years, so it's obviously something we should do. And I just wanted to see if we've started that review, has it been completed, where we stand?
Well, I'm certain it hasn't been completed, because it's going to take time for something like that to take place. But I'll let Mr. Johnson address that.
Thank you, Councilman Solon. Yes, staff has been working on that. And in fact, I believe Sue Hyman, our HR Director, is here tonight, and I'll allow her to speak if she needs to add anything to what I'm going to address. But staff has been formulating a plan. We believe that within the next 30 days that we will be able to give to the council a very specific format and process for going forward. Our instructions from the council in the July meeting was that you expected that review to occur within the year. That was the timeframe that was given to us. We expect to have it completed prior to the budget process, so that we can present to you some information and have some informed decisions and recommendations. So we would anticipate formalizing this within the next 30 days. We would expect having a process that will probably be completed sometime around March or April of 2009. It would be our goal, no later, I'm sorry, 2010, that we would bring recommendations to you no later than April of 2010. We would be looking for citizen participation on this committee. We'll be having some staff representation, and we will, I will present and discuss that plan with the mayor, and then we will seek input from the council on how you'd like to proceed with that review.
Thank you. I will be voting against the change to the bylaws, just as I voted against our contract with MARSIT, now known as NPR. I'm not comfortable with our liability insurance or lack of coverage, especially we are not covered on land use issues. We're not covered for zoning regulations, rezoning of land, subdivision regulations, variances, or permit issuances, just to name a few. We're placing not only the city council at personal risk, but also all of our volunteers on our boards and commissions. So I will again be voting against this.
I want to make sure everybody understands, the only reason you're considering this again, because we did pass it back on July 20th.
And I voted against it.
You voted against it, is because of the name change. That's the only reasons before you tonight. Going, any other discussion?
We're approving the bylaws. It says we're approving bylaws of NPR.
When Market changed its name from Market to Missouri Public Risk, they were required by the state of Missouri and the state of Kansas to update their bylaws to reflect that name change. So the bylaws that govern that organization and that we, that govern us and our coverage with NPR require that we, the council, adopt those bylaws. So that's what's before you tonight. They're the same bylaws we've had. The only change is that it's now Missouri Public Risk instead of Market.
Yes.
And Your Honor, again, I talked about NPR and why I don't support NPR, and that's like the annual trip to Branson, I think, was the weekend before last. I just don't think that that's something that our, should be in our insurance programs. There's a lot of free trips for a lot of people to Branson, Missouri, at the Chateau Hotel down there. So I just think that they, in addition to the items Councilman Solon brought up, there's a lot of things they could be doing better at Missouri Public Risk.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Councilman Lauer?
Mayor, I would just say that I believe it's important for us to move this forward based on the fact that the issue at this point of discussion is the name change itself.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Is there a motion for approval?
Some move.
Is there a second? Let's roll call it, please.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
No.
Carried with a four-two vote.
Okay, motion carries. The next item is a presentation from our distinguished county executive, Mike Sanders, regarding COMBAT. Welcome, Executive Sanders.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I think it's been a few days since I last saw you. I know you have a busy agenda, and I don't want to take up too much of your time. And Mayor Ross, thank you so much for allowing me to come and say a few words on behalf of COMBAT, and thank you to the council and Mr. Johnson for allowing me to be here. I'll cover a little bit of the history of COMBAT, what COMBAT is, and a little bit about the benefit to the citizens of Blue Springs, and really the citizens of our community. First off, COMBAT is a quarter cent sales tax that was passed first in 1989 by then-prosecutor Albert Reeder, ultimately repassed by then-prosecutor but later-to-be U.S. Senator Claire McCaskill. It's a quarter cent sales tax we've had now for 20 years. We're asking that it be renewed this November, November 3rd, for another seven years. It's unique in that what we ask for is every seven years, we ask that the voters look at the issue and pass on the issue, and decide whether it's done what we believe that it's done. I think that's very healthy for any organization, to repeatedly have to go back to the taxpayers and ultimately justify what it is you're doing with those tax dollars. We're not changing that. It's not a new tax. We're not asking for any additional tax revenues, even though those revenues have diminished, just like yours have, I'm sure, in the city of Blue Springs. So we're really asking to continue the same amount, even though it's bringing in about $2 million less per annum of what it's bringing in. Well, what do we do with the tax? It really has become, in many respects, the law enforcement tax for Jackson County government, which services so much primarily the people in Eastern Jackson County. And primarily the people in Eastern Jackson County, because unlike the city of Kansas City, who has $150 million law enforcement budget, I would estimate the law enforcement budgets of all of Eastern Jackson County wouldn't even come close to that 150, yet it's about half the population base. So it's divided between the prosecutors and the prosecutor's office. It pays for a third of them. By the way, half of the prosecutors that are located in Eastern Jackson County are paid for out of COMBAT. It pays for a third of the people that are in the Jackson County jail. Every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we run pretty much at capacity, just like most jails in the region. Ours is no different. So it pays for two entire floors, which are 260 inmates at the Jackson County jail, all of whom are felons, fit into the dangerous felony category, and so this is a very important population base, needless to say, to have separated or segregated from our society. Additionally, it provides all the funding for the Eastern Jackson County Drug Task Force, which is, has become, and will continue to be, the primary drug law enforcement agency for all the communities of Eastern Jackson County. Without the Eastern Jackson County Drug Task Force, there really is no drug unit to incorporate or certainly to investigate crimes that would occur in Eastern Jackson County. I think Independence may have four detectives. I don't know, Mayor, if Blue Springs has any drug unit detectives that aren't assigned to the Drug Task Force. I'm not sure that you do. So in many respects, it is without a doubt the enforcement arm for all of Eastern Jackson County. Buckner, Sibley, Oak Grove, Grain Valley, Lone Jack, Lee Summit, you look at these communities, and certainly our community or the community in Blue Springs, in Independence, and certainly in Lee Summit are no different in terms of what it needs. A little bit of history about what it's done. If you go back just a few short years, 1994, 1995, in Eastern, and by the way, how long do I have, Mayor, because I don't want to take up too much of your time?
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, if I talk too long, just shut me up, and I'll try and keep it.
Well, I know you talk fast.
I do. You know, I used to get paid by the word, so I try and get as much in as I can, so. With that being said, 1994, 1995, Eastern Jackson County was the methamphetamine capital, not of the state, not of the region, not of the country, but of the entire world. We bought sole-produced manufactured more methamphetamine in Eastern Jackson County than any other location in the entire known universe, okay? That's not something you want to put on your chamber brochure, that we were number one at that, right? Well, the reality is, so in 1994, then-prosecutor Claire McCaskill creates the Eastern Jackson County Drug Task Force, which looks at the issue of prosecution of these offenses in Eastern Jackson County. In a short span of about two years, we go from number one to now we're not even on the radar screen. In no small part, if not almost completely, we can lay that at the feet of our law enforcement officials working together through the Drug Task Force that moved this problem out of our community, and this was a huge public safety issue for all of us. We all remember homes burning down, homes exploding, people becoming sick, children becoming sick, all those concomitant prosecutions, just on any given week, I'm sorry, any given day. I was just as, as the task force prosecutor at the time, in 95 and 96, a short part there, I would sign between three and five search warrants for active meth labs on a given day. Now, I would assume, number one, we don't get any as large as those were, but number two, we'd be lucky to get those in a month or even in a quarter. That's how far the problem has become removed from what it was just a few short years ago. So now, fast forward to what happens if we don't have a COMBAT tax. The reality is, if you don't have that law enforcement arm, if you don't have the detectives to investigate, think about the difficulties it poses for us in Eastern Jackson County. The problem is, without the Drug Task Force, crime doesn't stop at municipal boundaries. It doesn't stop at the Blue Springs boundary, or the Kansas City boundary, or Buckner, or wherever that boundary may be. And Eastern Jack specifically, with the small law enforcement offices that we have, with tighter budgets, it's getting more difficult as time goes on, you have to have a task force that can go community-wide, that can look at a crime in Lone Jack, or Buckner, or Blue Springs, or Independence, and bring that all together for prosecution. Without that, ultimately, Eastern Jack becomes what it was in 1994. We revert back to the good old days of 94. There are some good things about the good old days. This is a bad thing, and that is you revert back to the way that it was, and that is Eastern Jack becomes the land of milk and honey yet again, or once again, for those that would want to manufacture these narcotics, because we wouldn't have the law enforcement assets to prosecute, to jail, the judges to put them, to hear those cases ultimately, or the Drug Task Force to arrest them. It would be a huge problem for all of us. COMBAT is a lot more than that. That's certainly the law enforcement side of what COMBAT does, which is critical to the basic law enforcement needs of our community. It also has award-winning programs that we started. Second drug court in the history of the United States was started in Jackson County. We have the second in the country. Now you can't shake a stick in any county, anywhere in the United States, without a drug court. The reason for that is, it diverts people that otherwise may go to prison that have addiction problems, diverts them into treatment, and has a 94 percent success rate. It takes the issue of addiction, pulls them out of the system, and 94 percent of the people that graduate from the program never re-enter the system in any form whatsoever. And when they graduate, they're productive, tax-paying members of our society. They have a job, employed full-time, have GEDs, completely turn those lives around. Over 1,600 graduates over the course of the 20 years of that program. So much of what COMBAT does, if there is a treatment agency, if there's a prevention agency, if there's a law enforcement agency, in one way or another, it's helped by COMBAT in terms of what it does. Far as I know, Jackson County is a rare county, in that what, the decision was made in 1989, then later in 1994, to pass a tax, and ultimately give the vast majority of that money to municipalities, give it to law enforcement agencies of those municipalities, give it to treatment programs to take it outside of what Jackson County government does. It's a very unique thing in terms of what that tax does. I think it's become very core to the function of what we do in Eastern Jackson County, certainly what this city does, what our law enforcement officials do, and for me, I think it really is a nightmare option to think about what would occur if we did not have this fundamental tax, which is fundamental to our public safety. With that, that's the short, expurgated version. I can go much, much, much longer, which I'm sure you'd love to hear, but we can do it maybe after the meeting. But Mayor Ross, that certainly answered any questions anyone has.
Certainly, before we open it up for questions, one of the other key components, we have police officers assigned to the Drug Task Force, but the thing that most people can probably relate to that COMBAT funds called D-A-R-E.
That's right, Mayor.
And that's a big thing in Blue Springs. I mean, it's well-attended, and we have parents that show up, and hopefully we're laying the framework and the foundation for, I believe, fifth graders are the one that goes through that, that they will stay drug-free, alcohol-free, not pollute their bodies.
Mayor, that's absolutely right. DARE, COMBAT funds, and I'm not sure if this council provides any additional resources in the vast majority of communities. I think Blue Springs is no different. It funds the DARE program for all the communities, something we would lose. Think about this number, since DARE's inception in Jackson County, 200,000 fifth and sixth graders have gone through the DARE program. There are about 650,000 people in Jackson County. I mean, slightly less than a third, and I'm sure some have moved out and things have occurred, but that means roughly a third of the population of Jackson County has gone through DARE. We all know children, grandchildren, friends' children that have gone through this program. Here's what else we did, because of the amount of money that we've put into the DARE program, and really the attention that's been focused on our DARE program, we do it different than the national model. The national model has had some criticism. That's changed, I think, in the last few years. But in Jackson County, we specifically study the DARE program, and the feedback we get is that nine out of 10, it's interesting to hear what the children say, great numbers with that, but we want to know, what do the families say? What do the mothers? What do the fathers? What do the grandparents think? Nine out of 10, the numbers higher, I think, is 91 percent, so a little better than nine out of 10 say. And not only has had a positive impact on their child, right, it's had a positive impact on their entire family, in terms of how they talk about this issue, how they discuss about this issue, and how they deal with it as a family, which is so critical, obviously, going forward. You hate to say this as well, but a lot of times, not with every family, but with some families, sometimes DARE is the one chance you're going to get with a fifth or sixth grader, which is a critical time in their lives, that may be the one real anti-drug component they have if they don't have a strong family life, or don't have strong parents, or grandparents, or guardians, right? So sometimes it is the number-one good contact they're going to have with a law enforcement official at a young age, it's very positive. We can all remember Officer Friendly, I'm dating myself, right? We can all remember that Officer Friendly visit, and sometimes it's the only positive impact they have, or influence they have with law enforcement, but it may be the one chance we have to take that child and keep them off of narcotics. So the model here shows that it's been very, very successful, and I think all the parents we talked to, Mayor, you bringing it up indicates it's had a very positive impact in our communities.
Are there any questions from the council, Mr. Sanders? Seeing none, thank you for coming.
Mayor, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you to the council. Thank you very much.
Before we go to the next presentation, I want to acknowledge some students sitting in the back from Tri-City, Christian Academy, students in government, right? I've already signed their document verifying that they were here, so they'll get the grade tomorrow. But anyway, stand up so people can see you there. Again, thank you for coming. You can stay as long as you like, but if you have to leave, I understand that as well, because the documents have already been signed. All right, the next item, we constantly challenge a staff to think creatively, to think outside of the box. I'm proud of Blue Springs and that we've been on the leading edge of a number of initiatives and things in Blue Springs. A lot of people don't know it, but it was under Dale Baumgartner that we started 911, one of the first communities in this area to do that. Fiber optics started in Blue Springs. So we're constantly challenging ourselves, as well as staff, to come up with ways and things to do that maybe it's a little bit on the leading edge and outside the regular thinking of people. But tonight, we have a presentation, and Meredith Parish, our Public Information Officer, and I guess Dan Hood, our IT person, is going to present, and it's called Text a Tip. Text a tip, if someone, if there's a problem in Blue Springs that's going on, and I don't want to steal your thunder, and you're witnessing that, you can text the police department and let them know what's going on, without having to run and call them up, run to a pay phone, or whatever, just text them and let them know what's going on, and then maybe we can catch them in the act, especially if they're doing things that they ought not be doing. So with that being said, Meredith Parish, our Public Information Officer, I'll let you take it with the presentation.
Well, good evening, Mayor Ross, and members of city council, and again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. We're very excited to introduce our newest communications and crime prevention program to be launched through the Blue Springs Police Department. Before we get started, I will introduce the two brains behind this project. That's our Information Technology Director, Dan Hood, as well as Captain Bob Morton of the Blue Springs Police Department. They are going to come up and actually roll out and introduce the program. They're going to speak about what the program is. They will reveal the program brand, the look and feel for the program, and talk about how it works, the technical use of it, and the value it offers to the community, as well as the Blue Springs Police Department. I will then come up and close the presentation and talk about how we're going to launch the program to our citizens and to our community through our targeted marketing and public awareness efforts. So Dan, if you could join me?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening. With me this evening is Mr. Chris Levesey. Chris is chairman of the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board. And we're going to work on, we have a banner we're going to set up, this is sort of a new banner, so we're going to get this set up for you. Tonight, we're pleased to announce a new public safety program in Blue Springs. The name of the program, as Mayor said, is Text a Tip. And let's see if we can get our banner here. The banner will be displayed at City Hall, as well as in the Public Safety Building. I think we have some other locations that's going to be displayed as well, which Meredith will cover. We would like to take a few minutes to present and describe the program. Text a tip provides citizens the ability to use their cell phones to anonymously text information on suspected criminal activity to the Blue Springs Police Department. The process is relatively simple, especially for those familiar with texting. From a cell phone, text BSPD plus your tip or message to the number 274-637. The significance of the number 274-637 is it spells crimes on most telephone keypads. So it's relatively straightforward. You take any cell phone that is capable of sending text messages, you send the text to this number. You must preface the message with the keyword BSPD, and then any message after that, and then the message will go to the police department. As noted, all communications are conducted anonymously between the tipster and the police department, and at the bottom, it's important to note that tipsters are advised to adhere to state law regarding texting while driving, so we want to make sure and maintain that. In addition to being able to text information, you can also email a tip using an electronic form. You submit the tip electronically from a link on the Blue Springs Police Department webpage. And what we see on the screen here, this is an example, or this is the form that you would fill out electronically. So to summarize, tips can be submitted as text messages from cell phones. Tips can be submitted from a link on the Blue Springs Police Department webpage. Both systems allow the tipster to remain anonymous, and once a tip is received, the police department can initiate a two-way chat session with the tipster in real time. So it is a two-way communication or conversation. At this point, I will turn it over to Captain Bob Morton of the Blue Springs Police Department, who will provide additional information relative to the police department. Thank you.
You're going to leave your notes.
I'm going to leave my notes. I appreciate you can go forward and back.
Good evening. We're excited about the program. We've been training all of our staff. We're ready to go. It will be active in the morning. Actually, probably when we leave here tonight, it's active, and we're ready if we get a tip. We can send photos, they can send us photographs, and it's multilingual. The system itself is designed, now, it does not replace 911. And the value of it is a crime prevention tool. As Mayor said, it demonstrates a new approach, innovative way. We're going to try to reach a demographic that may not want to communicate with the police department in standard methods. A large group of them you introduced back here, Mayor, we're looking at a younger generation, those that are tech-savvy adults, doesn't include me, but we are looking at a demographic that we haven't met with before. And texting is the fastest-growing way of communication. So we still have 911, we have all of the other methods to receive this information in place, and we've got this new one. So we're just adding to, giving another avenue to get that information, to communicate and work with the public.
Chief. Okay, play a little bit of musical chairs here. As we mentioned, we're very excited about the rollout of our program, and because this is such an innovative program, we want to make sure that we tap into each one of our demographics and audiences that we have throughout the city. So to do that, we're going to launch the program in three phases. The first phase actually takes place this evening to our presentation here at our city council meeting. We're presenting to you all, our city council members, our TV and web-viewing audience. That's introduction of the program. The objective here is to use a broad medium in which we can introduce the program, again, to a large and diverse audience of people. Some of the things that will take place after tonight, we will have our Text a Tip banners. We have one here that will be constantly on display at the police department here in the lobby. We will also have another banner on display at City Hall, so viewers who come in and do business with the city will have a chance to see these Text a Tip banners in place. We will be working with the Blue Springs Police Department to put these lovely window decals on all of the city-marked vehicles, the police department vehicles, again, branding the program, so citizens get aware that it's available and it's operable. And we also have several other collateral pieces, such as these magnets, that we will be providing each one of you this evening, again, to take home to your business, keep at home. Your kids will be able to see this, again, branding that message that this service is available for our residents. The second phase we're going to look at, of course, is our business and civic community. This is a very important group here in our community. We have quite a few businesses here. This period will take place between about mid-October through December. We're going to engage the business and civic community to, again, continue to carry this brand throughout their businesses. We're going to encourage their employees and their consumers for additional support if they are willing to take a magnet, or willing to take a decal. We have plenty available, and we'd like them to continue to carry this message of this new crime prevention tool here in our community. Again, some of the things that will happen, we will distribute these Text a Tip window decals. We have several posters that we can place inside of businesses. We would like to distribute the Text a Tip logo through the Chamber, through the Economic Development Corporation, as well as other civic groups. And again, the objective here is to continue saturating these target demographics. Again, we do constant business with several different businesses in the community, we have relationships with several civic groups, and so the idea is to communicate and make as many target groups aware of this new program as possible. Some of the, again, supporting tools that will be available, our website for the Text a Tip program is at bluespringsgov.com/tips, and that's actually live as we speak. So again, businesses and these civic groups will be able to go to our website for additional information, or for questions if they're citizens or consumers should have questions about how the program works. And then finally, lastly, we can't forget one of our key audiences, and that's our education and parent communities. This, again, will take place through about mid-October through December. We've actually had some real good success with the Blue Springs School District already. If you have attended any of the games at the South High School, we have three huge banners, same type of brand here, on display at the high school stadium along the fences. We plan to have those on display throughout the athletic calendar year with the school district. So again, they have stepped up to the plate and have become a good partner for the launch of this program so far. And again, we will continue to distribute our Text a Tip window decals, our posters, and the important thing with this is the promotion of this program in the school community is subtle enough so that we're not going to violate any current school policies regarding cell phone or electronic device usage in the classroom, but again, we're working with the school district as a partner to roll out the program. So that's how we're going to saturate the entire community of Blue Springs. And again, we thank you for your time this evening to share the program with you, and welcome any questions you have regarding the technical use or rollout of the program. Thank you.
If you don't have any questions, I'm going to ask our assistant officer.
I just have a comment. I think it's fantastic, you know, I think that it's nice that we have a group of students here tonight to, for this presentation. I'm not very tech-savvy, but that's where the world is today, and I think it's fantastic. I compliment everybody involved.
Very well stated.
Just a quick question, I guess, would be, in the presentation, you mentioned that you would be talking or could text live. Will that be handled through dispatch, or is that with the officer, or an officer that maybe is responding?
This is a computer-based, internet-based program, and several computers in the police department, all the supervisors have it on their computers. It will arrive at dispatch 24 hours a day, seven days a week, instantly. They will handle anything that is of an urgent, occurring, in-progress-type nature. If not, then it will be answered by someone of the appropriate knowledge base on the next workday, which is, if it involves an investigative incident on something- workday, which is if it involves an investigative incident on something past, a detective will respond. If it's something to do with the youth unit, somewhere along there, somebody from the youth unit will respond. So the training took us a little bit. We had to train all the supervisors, all the command staff, the dispatchers, but we're, all the computers are ready and all the training's been done.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Lauer?
Yes. Sir, if you would stay there for just a moment. I think this is great as well. Would this also, I appreciate the fact that it's for crimes, where you can be the one who's not doing anything wrong, but what about for situations where an individual feels as though they may commit suicide, or there's some individual thing that's going on, or where they feel like they may want to take drugs and they text in? Can that be addressed through that, too?
We'll address anything that arrives to us. The system itself prompts you that if it's an emergency, use the standard 911, deal with it immediately. But even in our training, we did not announce to the dispatchers, which was the first group we trained, that we were training command staff. We set up in here, we sent some messages within five, six seconds then. We were getting responses back from the dispatchers that were on duty. So we'll handle anything that arrives.
So it could also handle domestic violence or any other potentially violent situations? Where, and I'm thinking of just a situation where a person may not be in a situation where they can make a call.
And there is even a specific in the program that if you are in danger and get a message to us, you can actually stop any responses if it would cause you to be in a more dangerous situation.
Given that it's anonymous, then how would that work? Would you track me down?
The specifics of it, I have to refer to the IT department.
But I could, yeah, that's fine. I could be located if I'm the one in danger. If it comes through tips, it's anonymous, is that correct?
Yes.
But if I don't want to be anonymous, I want you to know where I am.
You can enter your name, phone number, whatever, in the system.
You can answer the contact information, then?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any other questions? Our City Administrator, Mrs. Johnson, would you close it out?
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank and recognize Meredith Parish, Dan Hood, our IT Director, Captain Morton, see Captain Modrell back there as well, and Tom with our Advisory Board, and Chris Lovacey, Chairman of our Citizen Advisory Board. They've been very, obviously, I think you can see the enthusiasm and excitement that they have in presenting this to you tonight. This was an initiative that was presented to you in last year's budget. And if you'll go back and refer to that budget document, you'll see me reference this particular initiative and another product that we're referring to as Reverse 911. And that project was unfortunately put on hold during this past year as we were making some challenging budget decisions, and we put this project on hold approximately 60 to 70 days ago. After an analysis of our budget, I gave the green light to staff to move forward with this. So this is the first phase of something that we had hoped to do much earlier. There's an additional component that will be coming eventually. It will be called the Reverse 911. That's when we have the ability to alert people via telephone and through a computer system, much like when the school district will alert parents whenever there's a snow day or when a school is closed. So there's some exciting things that we're doing and implementing to help fight crime and to help increase public safety awareness and communication. I'm very excited, and I appreciate the support of the mayor and council as we bring these initiatives to you.
Okay. Again, we thank you, and I also want to recognize another member of the Public Safety Citizens' Advisory Committee, Mrs. Janet Black is sitting in the audience as well.
Oh, I didn't see Janet.
Yeah. So anyway, I'm appreciative of all the work that they do working with the police department. And just keep up the good work. Next, we have a public hearing that needs to be continued until the November 16th council meeting. So if I would, someone make a motion to continue the public hearing on the rezoning of J. Wolf Auto and Sales and Service until the November 16th meeting? I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next, we have a public hearing on annexation of Right of Way from Seven Highway in Colburn from Jackson County. This was continued from the September 8th and the 21st council meeting.
Your Honor, I'd like to exhibit, enter several exhibits for the record, and I will be amending the exhibit that appears in your council packet. We've had an additional item that we have received since we published and made available the City Council agenda. So the exhibits include a City Council information form with attachments, petition of voluntary annexation, site location map, vicinity map, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, August 29, 2009, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of sight, copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing, letter from Jackson County, August 20, 2009. And the second exhibit is the petition for annexation signed by the county. Your Honor, I'd like to give you those exhibits. And Mr. McDonald, can we take these two public hearings concurrently?
Yes.
Okay. And Your Honor, for public hearing, ANNX-8-09-2287, we'd also like to enter exhibit number one, which includes a City Council information form with attachments, petition of voluntary annexation, site location map, vicinity map, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, August 29, 2009, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of sight, copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. And this concludes the exhibits I have for these two public hearings.
Okay, Ms. Allen, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Before this evening, there are actually two separate annexation requests, one related to Jackson County Public Road Right-of-Way, and the other regarding Missouri Department of Transportation Public Road Right-of-Way. The map above does show the Jackson County Right-of-Way, that's Colburn Road at Seven Highway intersection. And this map here shows the MoDOT Seven Highway Right-of-Way proposed for annexation. And this is the composite map showing the property in blue to the north, being what's currently in the city limits of Blue Springs. And you can see there to the south in kind of that reddish hue property that's currently within the city of Lake Ladawanna city limits. The purpose for the annexations are to bring this property into the city limits of Blue Springs as it's related to the expansion and improvement of the Colburn Road and Seven Highway intersection. And you can see the extent of that expanding to the west and east on Colburn Road, and also to the north and south along Seven Highway. The approximate area in the Jackson County jurisdiction, that is Colburn Road, is about 2.95 acres. That within the MoDOT Right-of-Way on Seven Highway is 1.61 acres. And again, the annexations here support the improvement to the intersection of Seven Highway and Colburn Road, which anticipated as part of the general obligation bond package approved by the voters last year in August. So again, before you this evening are the two public hearings for these proposed annexations. I'll certainly stand for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, the only confusing part to me there is the stuff that's in Lake Ladawanna. Are they, that is being annexed, or are they de-annexing it, or am I getting that right?
That's a good question. Yeah, the hatched area is the area in question that's being improved. The area in yellow there is what's actually being proposed to be annexed. That's either, they're both essentially within, excuse me, the yellow area has both county Right-of-Way and state Right-of-Way, both of which are within unincorporated Jackson County. So we're not de-annexing.
The annexation is not what's in Lake Ladawanna already?
Correct.
That's just going to be improved?
Exactly. That's correct.
Right. I hope they appreciate it.
Ms. Allen, would you address that?
I will. And Mr. Fowler, and just so you know, they're essentially, they will appreciate it, but the funding that will, that will, this project has numerous layers of funding, including state of Missouri, MoDOT funds, and MoDOT, they really don't care where the money is spent. And so what we're approaching this is that we will be spending bond money on that portion of the road that's improved within the corporate limits of Blue Springs. MoDOT will be utilizing grant fund money on any areas of improvements outside the city limits of Blue Springs.
Any other questions, Ms. Allen? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in support of, in support of the annexation? In opposition to? In opposition to? Seeing none? We will close this public hearing. There's no introduction of anything, so we will go to item nine, introduction and reading of Bill 4086, approving amended final plat McDonald's subdivision.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill number 4086, an ordinance approving the amended final plat of McDonald's subdivision.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Second reading of Bill number 4086, an ordinance approving the amended final plat of McDonald's subdivision.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4269.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4087, amending the Code of Ordinances relating to domestic assault.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number 4087, an ordinance amending section 220255A of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to lower the age at which a person can be held responsible for a domestic assault from 18 years to 17 years.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Second reading of Bill number 4087, an ordinance amending section 220255A of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to lower the age at which a person can be held responsible for a domestic assault from 18 years to 17 years.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4270.
Okay. Next, we're down to mayoral announcements. I have three. One is, I'm sure most people have had an opportunity to at least drive by if they have not been in the new Target store, which will have been open this week, I guess, two weeks. I just want to recognize the staff, all the hard work that they put in in making this happen in a timely fashion. I know that I was privy to a number of conversations that our City Administrator, Eric Johnson, and Assistant City Administrator Todd Pelham had with the developer in making sure we kept everything on track and in a timely fashion. And also, I know that the Finance Department, Christine Cates, she and her people did a yoga job in making sure that the bonds were issued in a timely fashion so we could get this project completed. Scott Allen and his staff in going out and making numerous inspections, helping them navigate the process through the system. And last but not least, Oliver the Great, Public Works. I know that I had a number of conversations with your staff as they worked diligently to work with Kidwell and the construction people in getting those roads put in so people would have access to Target. So I just want to make sure that staff know that we appreciate what they did and job well done. Because as Target opens, it means they generate revenue, which is something that we certainly can use here in the city to undertake the projects and things that we're doing to try to make sure that the services that we provide are not compromised and we're continuing to do it at a level that people have come to expect. The next thing is all, is back to Ms. Cates and her staff. There was some recognition here recently, an achievement for excellence in finance. Now, we knew that already, and I'm glad other people understand and realize it as well. But, you know, through the years, they have received several consecutive years of receiving awards for the work that they do in finance, so we want you and your staff to know again. Congratulations, and we appreciate all you do. We know we can count on you, and it's good to see other people recognize that quality as well. Last but not least is on November 6th is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. We have the guest speakers, we always do, I think Paul Kaufman, that used to play for the Green Bay Packers and the Kansas City Chiefs, whose son played at MU. And I understand he has another one that's playing in K-State or somewhere over there across the border. But anyway, he will be the guest speaker, but this year, we are recognizing women veterans. So if you in the audience, of the listening audience, know of women that served in the military, have them call the mayor's office at 228-0110 and give their names to Kathy or Cheryl, because we want to recognize you. So kind of get the word out for me, would you? Please. That's it on mayoral announcements, so next I come to visitors. I have two visitors' forms, one from Jeff Weber. Is Jeff still here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you come up? You want to talk about something I think you guys talked about earlier? Stormwater.
Yes, sir. Stormwater management, sir.
Okay.
I found it very disturbing that we have 96 stormwater basin sub-communities, if you will, subdivisions, that are being managed in 96 different ways. I think it would be of great value for our community, and I'm all for saturating the community with text-to-tip. I'm really trying to prevent maybe saturating the community with poorly managed stormwater basins. And I'm very, very concerned with the fact that that's being managed by 96 different philosophies. And I found it, I think it would be of great interest for the community and for our government to support the management of that stormwater basin or management system. And I don't know, I just really found that disturbing.
Okay. Thank you for coming, sharing your thoughts with us, and certainly the council will take that on advisement. Next, we have W. Kevin Romer?
Did good.
All right. I did good, huh?
Did good.
All right.
Your Honor, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and the council about the subject of stormwater retention basins and their management. Obviously, we sat for a good hour, a little longer, I guess, talking with the committee or task force that had been developed to review that subject.
Right.
And we appreciate the opportunity to chat with them, but I wanted the opportunity to speak to the greater council on the issue. It appears to me that the committee has come up to a dead end. Councilman Shaver indicated his opposition to changing anything in the way that it's managed. Councilman Fowler wanted to change it back to something similar to what 1997 law was, and Councilman Lauer kind of was lukewarm and didn't take a position. I don't mean to imply anything that you might have said otherwise, but the, and the discussion was, well, we'll give it to the greater council and we'll deal with it in the end of November at a meeting, and kind of as a next step. And I just wanted to share with you some of the thoughts of those concerned citizens like myself on next steps for us as well. I had prepared a letter and I gave it to Councilman Shaver to share with you all, and you can get a copy of it.
That has been shared.
That has been shared, great. And I gave a copy to the gentleman from the examiner that's here as well, and I'd like the opportunity to read it, if you don't mind. October 19th, 2009, in regards to stormwater retention basin maintenance, concerned citizens, dear concerned citizens, you have received this letter as an owner and the person responsible for one of the 96 stormwater retention basins in the city of Blue Springs. This letter is intended to increase your awareness and solicit your involvement concerning an issue we believe to be of significance as a public safety and property damage risk management issue for the city of Blue Springs. In 1997, the Blue Springs City Council voted to change an ordinance that required the city to share in the cost of maintaining the stormwater retention basins within the city. The change shifted the responsibility from a joint responsibility of the city and the private property owner of the basins to the exclusive responsibility of the private property owner of the basins. This change has created a burden on a few property owners who are now responsible for the public safety and property damage risk mitigation of their fellow Blue Springs citizens. Not only is the use of their property restricted, they are being required to carry the financial burden of maintaining the basins without any assistance. These stormwater retention basins are intended to mitigate erosion and flood damage. The basins slow the flow of water protecting downstream properties by absorbing water flow from upstream properties. The city creates storm sewers that divert the flow of water and dump the water into these basins. The city is required to maintain the stormwater sewer system, but somehow do not see their responsibility for these basins as a part of that system. We request your attendance at the next city council meeting to voice your concerns. We also We also suggest that you invite your City Councilperson to address this issue and explain their vote to place this burden for public safety on a few citizens of Blue Springs rather than on the citizens who benefit from this stormwater management system, i.e. all the citizens of Blue Springs. The typical costs include regular mowing of dry bottom basins to dam maintenance and silt management of retention ponds, including the removal of trash and debris that accumulate after storm activity. These costs are estimated to be over $300,000 annually. As one of the 96 private property owners currently carrying the burden, we ask your support in bringing this issue before the City Council and the public. The city has an annual budget of over $84 million and it is our contention that this is a public safety issue and a duty of the city that is being abrogated and is a failed policy that needs to be corrected. Sincerely, W. Kevin Romer." And I think the other major issue that I'd like just to point out to the council that I think is important from a public standpoint besides the 96 basins, is the fact that the city has in essence shifted responsibility and liability, if you will, according to your city attorney, to the private property owners. So, the people downstream are dependent on these 96 individual groups to maintain these retention basins in such a way to protect their property and their safety. And I think that's a total abrogation of responsibility of the city and the City Council. So, I would encourage you in your meeting on the 30th, consider that from a public safety perspective on those folks downstream depending on the city rather than on the individual property owners to properly maintain those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and sharing those thoughts with us. And I'm certain that we will have a lively discussion at our work session on the 30th. And certainly, we will take all those things on advisement. We will count the costs and all those things that goes into making decisions like that. I don't have any other forms wishing to speak. I want to thank Tri-City Government Class. I will put an extra star on your document tonight that you stayed through the whole session. So, anyway, thank you for doing it. Thank all of you in attendance. And at this time, I accept a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Meeting adjourned.